Motion by Mr. Dallas to approve second by Mr. Cogdell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. I oppose. At this time, we'll recognize Mr. Russell, please. Everybody come forward.
Okay.
Come on. Come on. Where you at? Thank you. Come here. Hi. In grateful appreciation to Russell Priest for dedicated service to the people of Blaine County as Chairman of the Blaine County Board of Commissioners, December two thousand fifteen, December two thousand sixteen, present third day of January two thousand seventeen by the Blaine County Board of Commissioners. Russell, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I will say thank you, but you didn't voted on being Chairman last time. We've done a lot of good things, I think, as a Commissioner this past year. And I wish the new Commissioner with the best of luck and Godspeed. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Priest, I just want to thank you for your leadership during the past years. You took time before each meeting to come by the office and meet and review the agendas so that you were well prepared and that means a lot certainly to me as manager. I appreciate your support and the good year that we had.
Thank you. You get a good job too, pretty. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Item four, matters of interest to Commissioners. Anyone have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I have something.
Okay, Mr. Bullock.
I'd like to, first of all, you're probably aware that Hurricane Matthew destroyed the Elizabeth Town Rescue Squad building. It's totally destroyed, the living quarters, the garage, everything is destroyed, hundred percent destroyed. I'd like to ask this body to approve for us to use, us meaning Elizabeth Town Rescue Squad, use the county EMS building as well as part of our emergency duties. I was on duty Sunday from six to twelve midnight and the building that we're using there is very dark out there. We have women that are on our squad and the security is not that good out there where we are. We appreciate the building that we're using. The windows out there do not have any blinds or shades. They're about three feet by five foot. And I was asking this board to allow the E-Town Rescue to use the EMS building, the county building. I have not talked to anyone like the director or the fire marshal. I'm requesting you and this board to grant us the authority to use that building due to security number one.
Mr. Bullock, I appreciate that and we certainly want to help Elizabeth Town Rescue Squad. I would ask that Greg Martin look into that and he needs to be able to do a poll with the board members. But let's just make sure logistics and everything before we approve something that we don't know exactly what we need to do.
I can live with that, sir.
Okay. So Greg will stay in touch with you and proudly and we'll decide whenever it's convenient.
Okay.
And if you need to call, we'll call special meeting Greg over the phone, call wherever we need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Anyone else? Individuals, delegation wishes to address the Commissioners? If not, revenue department, Renee Davis?
Good evening again. On item A, I have three items this evening. On item A, we have foreclosed property or just parcels of land we foreclosed in two thousand sixteen earlier on Out Hill Drive in Blaine Row. It was previously owned by Liz the Christian and the county's expense was nine thousand eight hundred, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Now the previous owner, Ms. Christian, is offering a bid for ninety-nine hundred, is requesting a private sale due that she's a previous owner and this is part of the general statutes, one oh five, three seventy-six C. So I'm asking the board to consider accepting that bid as a private sale between the county and Ms. Christian.
Motion by Mr. Cogdell. Second by Mr. Dallas. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. I oppose. Item D.
Another foreclosed property located at twelve oh six Lightwood Knot Road in Clarton. This was in two thousand and nine when it was foreclosed on. The county's expense was two thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Talisha Henry is offering a bid on December twenty-eighth of two thousand sixteen for twenty-four hundred dollars and I'm asking the board to consider this also for twenty-four hundred so that I can move forward with the upset bid.
Motion by Mr. Priest, second by Mr. Bullock. Any discussion?
Yeah, question. It says it costs my cell.
Kelly.
Oh, it's supposed to be Kelly, I'm sorry.
I wanted to sign this up, is it probably? Hello?
It's a half acre.
Is it located in residential or is it?
Well, the assessed value was fourteen thousand four eighty, but right now for the new reevaluation. That was when this was done foreclosed in twenty, two thousand and nine, so that's why the property was at a lower value at that time. That's the only expense that we had.
All opposed, say aye. I oppose. Okay. Now we're going through that long list of revised accounts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. The Marshall Exam and Fire Department. If we do not have anybody, we can reappoint or we can table. What's the pleasure of the board? I'd say reappoint. Second. Mr. Cogdell made the motion to approve or reappoint and Mr. Priest, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Bay Tree Fire Department, appropriate, reappoint. Reappoint Mr. Gooden, second by Mr. Priest, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Clarton Fire Department, these two gentlemen both want to be removed off. So does anyone have two new names for Clarton?
I don't think we table this.
Motion to the table by Mr. Bullock, second by.
Second.
Dr. Goins, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Division of Agents.
Mr. Chairman, two members that are on that board, that advisory committee wish not to be retained. So I suggest Ms. Reverend Rachel Mitchell, as long as the meeting is not on a second or fourth Monday. She said she will work.
Anybody know when they made?
Either Tuesday or Thursday.
Okay. So Ms. Rachel Mitchell.
And I recommend Ms. Meredith B. Snowden.
Okay.
To replace Ms. Snowden.
And if it's okay, we need to change, put David Howard there instead of Chris Howson so that be part of your motion, Mr. Bullock. Yes. Motion by Mr. Bullock. Second. Second by Dr. Goins. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. East Arcadia.
I'm looking to reappoint.
Motion to reappoint. Second by Mr. Cogdell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Clarkton Fire Department, appropriate, reappoint. Reappoint Mr. Gooden, second by Mr. Cogdell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Clarkton Fire Department, these two gentlemen both want to be removed off. So does anyone have two new names for Clarkton?
I don't think we table this.
Motion to the table by Mr. Bullock, second by.
Second.
Dr. Goins, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Health and Human Service.
Reappoint.
Motion to reappoint, Mr. Cogdell, second by.
Second.
Mr. Bullock, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Division of Agents.
Two members that are on that board, that advisory committee wish not to be retained. So I suggest Ms. Reverend Rachel Mitchell, as long as the meeting is not on a second or fourth Monday. She said she will work.
Anybody know when they made?
When they made, either Tuesday or Thursday.
Okay. So Ms. Rachel Mitchell.
And I recommend Ms. Meredith B. Snowden.
Okay.
To replace Ms. Snowden.
And if it's okay, we need to change, put David Howard there instead of Chris Howson so that be part of your motion, Mr. Bullock. Yes. Motion by Mr. Bullock. Second. Second by Dr. Goins. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. East Arcadia.
I'm looking to reappoint.
Motion to reappoint. Second by Mr. Cogdell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Nondevelopment.
Reappoint.
Second. Reappoint Mr. Gooden, second by Mr. Cogdell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Health and Human Service.
Reappoint.
Motion to reappoint, Mr. Cogdell, second by.
Second.
Mr. Bullock, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Hickory Grove Fire Department.
Reappoint.
Motion to reappoint, Mr. Gooden, second by Mr. Cogdell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Kelly Fire Department.
Reappoint.
Motion to, Ms. Trivet, to reappoint, second by Dr. Goins. All in favor say aye. Aye. Level Emergency Planning Council, before we do this, Jamie Smith, time's not up and Mr. Corbett, my understanding is cannot attend and.
I make the motion to appoint Pete Batt.
And Pete Batt has been, made a motion to appoint Pete Batt and he's the Chief of the Dublin Fire Department, I believe. Second. Second by Mr. Cogdell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Library Board.
Reappoint.
Reappoint Mr. Cogdell.
Second.
Second by Ms. Trivet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Lisbon Fire Department.
Reappoint.
Reappoint Mr. Gooden.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cogdell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Plum River Council Government.
Motion to appoint Chairman.
Second. Second by, motion by Mr. Dallas to appoint Charles Peterson, second by Mr. Britt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Tarnio Fire Department.
Reappoint.
Reappoint Mr. Trivet, second by Dr. Count. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Tubalmore Fire Department.
Reappoint.
Second. I don't know what the second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gooden. Any discussions? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. White Oak Fire Department.
Reappoint. Second.
I'm making a turn for me now. Dr. Goins made the motion, second by Ms. Trivet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Thank you very much. And the next item of business is next month, Antifa Fire Department, nope, moved down one.
We're taking over the table.
Blaine County Area Department and Elizabeth Town Plan is on in the Southeast Community and Family Service. That's the next January seventeen.
What about Clarkton first? That's on the table.
Table, Clarkton. Everybody.
Hold on, when we're looking at Joseph Roja is presently on that Southeastern board and that's one that we have to make an appointment to also, so we need to be looking at him. His name needs to be removed or he resides on the board.
Get it from Mr. Martin or Ms. Maria by that, Cogdell.
That's Southeastern?
It's Southeastern.
So it's Wayne Edge.
Wayne Edge.
He's down, I suspect, with them.
He has two of them, Wayne and Joe Roja, so it's two there.
Okay. Ms. Maria straightened that out for a minute.
Mr. Chairman, are we tabling the Clarkton Fire District until the next meeting?
Yeah, we table it.
Until the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the partner people, Dr. Goins, Ray, Ms. Trivet, David, Mike, that's all. There you go. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to review the calendar with you for the months of January and February. And on next Monday, January ninth, I want to remind you, we have a special meeting scheduled for five P.M. and that will be held at the Ag Center and we'll review the agenda for that in just a few moments. On Tuesday, the tenth, at twelve noon, the Chamber Lunch Meeting will be held at the Cape Fear Farmers Market. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference will be held on Thursday and Friday, the twelfth and thirteenth in Raleigh. Also, on the evening of the twelfth, at seven P.M., the Blading Fire Association Meeting will be held at the Carver's Creek Fire Department. On Monday, the sixteenth, offices will be closed in observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. Also, at eleven A.M., there will be a parade here in Elizabeth Town. The board will meet on Tuesday, the seventeenth, at six thirty P.M. and on the thirty-first, the North Carolina Southeastern Partnerships Annual Meeting will be held at the Cape Fear Winery and Vineyard.
I mean, reserve, if you don't plan on going out.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Southeastern?
Yep. You give them a reason, you plan off the end of that.
Moving over to the month of February, the board meets, or actually on the sixth, on that Monday, there will be a prayer service at eight A.M. The board meets that evening at six thirty. On Thursday, the ninth, at seven P.M., the Blaine County Fire Association Meeting will be held at the Clarkton Fire Department. On Monday, the twentieth, the board meets at six thirty. And Saturday, the twenty-fifth through Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, the NECO Legislative Goals Conference will be held in Washington, DC. Mr. Chairman, if I might jump ahead over to item E while everyone has their calendars out.
Okay.
You know, we've scheduled a special meeting for next Monday, the ninth, and we would also like to ask the board to consider scheduling an additional special meeting for later in the month and Monday, the thirtieth is a proposed date. And that could be at the Ag Center as well. It's more of a planning meeting to have, review projects and issues that are going on, have the department heads do updates on various things that are of interest to the Commissioners, so any date's fine, but that's just a proposed date. That's the fifth Monday.
Does it meet like we did a couple of years ago?
Yeah, like we did last, we did one just a little bit last year.
Yes, sir. The night's gonna be like a brainstorming and authorities, we have some, the data, combined the data presented, the authorities to the Commissioners for discussion.
Thank you, move that, motion that we.
Okay.
I make motion to third.
Motion by Mr. Cogdell, second by Ms. Trivet. You want to put the time there?
I see, let's say five thirty.
Five thirty. Second, any discussion? Thirty.
The Ag Center, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That'd be fine.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Where's it going from?
January. January. Mm-hmm. January thirty.
All months gonna be full like this.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
On the twenty-fifth, the Blaine County Hospital, is that still on for the twenty-fifth?
That is. I heard that, we need to add that to our, oh, I'm sorry, I just missed that. It is on there. Thank you. The, at six P.M., the Blaine County Hospital Foundation will have its masquerade ball at Lu Mill Vineyard. That's a fundraiser for the foundation, if I'm not mistaken.
That's on what day now?
February, on Saturday, February twenty-fifth.
February twenty-fifth.
Yes, sir. If there are no other questions regarding the calendar, moving to item B. I just wanted to give a brief update regarding the detention center project. It is moving on, on schedule and on budget. With one issue that we're gonna talk about in just a moment, but I just want to let you know, the project is sixty-three percent of the budget by time is passed at this point. And in terms of the budget, sixty-nine percent of the budget has been expended, so it's right on track as far as key dates to keep on the horizon. The substantial completion date is still May twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen. The final completion is scheduled for June twenty-second and the state Health and Human Services inspection should be completed by July twenty-first. So that project has really moved quickly. And we have good team working on it, so we're very fortunate.
In May, probably the Sheriff's Department might be moving in.
We have, so just the law enforcement center side should be accessible.
Not the jail department, just law enforcement.
That's right.
We might be moving in there.
That's a good one.
Maybe.
So just wanted to give you an update on that. Item C is a matter related to this project and it is, it's the first change order that increases the overall cost of the guaranteed maximum price that we've had to date. And the purpose for this request is for an amount of eighty-one thousand dollars. It is for a grinder pump, it's called a muffin monster grinder pump that needs to be installed for the sewer system, for the town sewer system. It was originally included in the special use permit application to the town of Elizabeth Town before the project was started and when they gave approval, it was on the basis that that would be in there. As part of the value engineering, that was removed and a pin system was to be used to help catch any type of large solids or whatever in the wastewater system. However, the town is requesting that that be included, so that will require a change order in the amount of eighty-one thousand, I think it's two hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars. And that brings the total to sixteen thousand six hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen million six hundred fifteen thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars.
That's a very good.
Would that pump be on the property site of the council?
Uh, yes, sir.
I want to make sure that it's taken somewhere else and I need to catch up some big problem.
No, that's a good question, that it'll be on.
I'm a little worried.
So the one that was included in the plan would not be sufficient?
That was, well, it was included in the original plan. As part of the value engineering, it was removed after the special use permit was issued by the town. And so now, when the final completion or the final plans are being approved, they're asking that that be.
Put back.
That's right. On certain planes.
Yeah, so while, if it was in the original and then removed, what were the reasons for?
To save money, that's part of the value engineering process. We're trying to identify ways to, to cut costs. That's right. Reduce costs. Sort of town.
But now we're adding the cost back in there?
That's correct.
So what has this accomplished? By taking it away?
Yeah, at this point, ultimately, ultimately, yeah, it's a net, it's back in there. It was not in the original guaranteed maximum price that was approved of Bordeaux, so that's why it needs to be added now. It was in the original preliminary, that's it.
The intent was to save eighty-seven thousand.
Right, exactly. That's right.
So that.
And we put, every cell has a pin and nothing can get by those pins according to the jail expert, but this town still wanted the grinder pump to.
And they're used in other cities that, you know, require them, so it's a.
So we'll be the one to have to maintain that pump.
Take second, we got that.
I think that's right.
See, I mean, we're gonna maintain that pump. If the city gonna come in and maintain that, it'll be the county. Who will maintain the pump?
I think it'd be the county, I feel.
It's county property.
Yeah.
Where are the monthly funds?
It's a town county property, we have to maintain.
Was that part, was that part, I know it wasn't in the original, it was in the original proposal.
It's included in the original, it's not in the original guaranteed maximum price. However, the amount of funds that the county borrowed for this project.
Includes that amount.
Has that, is far behind us.
So there's not gonna be any additional funds that we're having to.
Well, I mean, in all honesty, we otherwise wouldn't have spent that money, but now we will, so it is an increase over, it's not an increase over the amount that we have available to spend on the project.
That was already included in like the original tax base, I guess, for the increase of the.
Well, we requested more funds from, we've tried to ensure that we had a sufficient amount.
There's that surplus there.
In order, in the event that things like this came up, so.
We're tapping, we're tapping into that.
That's right.
Additional surplus.
That's right. And we hoped that that wouldn't be necessary.
More, I'm sorry.
But then I'm just, I guess, I'm not trying to make a mountain of all here, but eighty-one thousand dollars, and I'm just confused as to why it wasn't left on there if it was something that was going to ultimately need to be in there anyway? Were they just trying to get something approved for that?
Well, they, our, the architects and the, and Bordeaux both indicated that a pin system would be sufficient. And so there are different, obviously, there are different schools of thought on that. Some, the town and others believe that this muffin monster grinder system is necessary and the town's approval is necessary for the project to move forward.
And there was some conversation like the pins would be acceptable at one time and then more thought process.
Right.
And the town decided they want to make sure that things didn't get in their sewer system and cause them trouble at the sewer plant.
That's right.
So if I go on with this muffin monster, excuse me, this one, the muffin monster is gonna be able to handle the, load the waste over the pin that was originally proposed?
Well, the pins, ideally, the pins will catch. And we're thinking, we're referring to things like sheets and those types of items. So unusual, not, not items that are normally entered into.
Is it something that, I guess, would be more of an upfront cost that would save money in the load and run is what I'm kinda getting at.
Yeah.
Is it more of an upfront cost it's going to, we may have, while we've got, while we've got it there, this surplus money we're able to then pull from and use for this project, be able to pull from that versus having to, you know, ten, fifteen years from now, increase to fix it.
Yeah, well, and particularly if you think about it from the town's perspective, the intent is to install this piece of equipment to prevent problems on the town's sewer sites like.
The pin system should catch everything, the muffin shouldn't ever have to work.
Right.
But if it does, it's just protect, the town's protection.
And yeah, he went out, sitting down.
It was our own protection.
We'll save.
What is the pleasure of all?
That if you do not put on this system.
You don't open the jail.
Say again?
You don't open your jail.
Well, I should do that. That could make a motion.
Second, Ms. Trivet, any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Got twenty million of jails sitting there.
Don't say go.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Item D.
Item D, I'd just like to take a moment to briefly review the agenda for our meeting next Monday. We're looking forward to that meeting. Really, it's an opportunity for you all to be able to discuss items of importance to you for our agenda for the next year, for us to work on. And one of the activities that we're gonna do, we're gonna do a quick icebreaker, we're gonna review our vision and values for the organization. But one of the main activities I want to review with you, just so you can have an opportunity to be thinking about it over the course of the next week, is an activity called a SWOT over the course of the next week, is an activity called a SWOT analysis, and many of you have probably participated in that before, but SWOT is an acronym for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And the strengths and weaknesses, think internally, like strengths and weaknesses of the organization, of county departments and that type thing. As far as opportunities and threats, if you'll think externally. One of the, one of the issues that I thought of as a threat, an external threat that is affecting our community and our society in general, is the opioid crisis that we're having, addiction, that type thing, so that's an example of an issue that is affecting not only law enforcement, DSS, foster care, the court system, just, you know, many departments, and so that's just one example. So if you'll think about the strengths and weaknesses internally, county departments, and then the opportunities and threats, think about external issues that you may think of, so that's what, that's really the main activity, and then, as Mr. Peterson said, we'll compile that information and then come back and discuss it and develop an action list for us to work on over the course of the next year.
Yeah, and I think that the vision and the mission of the past boards may change, may stay the same, so this is what this is all about, and to get a feel for what your priorities are and what the priorities should become in this Board of County Commissioners, so that we'll have a pathway for success. So it's important that you do your homework, you have questions, call Greg or me or whoever, and us come next week, prepare to work and prepare to set a goal and agenda and move this county forward.
Do I ask Mr. Chairman, Mr. Martin to do one thing? He brought up the open door problem, and we've dealt with each point, and we've seen some of the things that each point's been doing or have not been doing. Could you give us an update, we received that information on Creighton and East Point? Could you kind of update us on where that's going and exactly?
What we want to do tonight is just get everything on the table, and then we'll come back the thirtieth with a plan, or suggested, whatever the board's come up with, and then the next time we sit down to meet, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
That's not gonna happen, we're gonna, we're gonna do the meeting next week, but eventually each point, or Sheriff's Department, or Economic Development, whatever our agenda is, is what, who's gonna come and make presentations and answer questions from this board.
Okay.
And we're gonna set a direction and path for this board. EMS, whatever, whatever the issues are. Because I think it's important to get three or four of your board members, and we need to set the course of this Board of Commissioners and the path, and that'd be one way we can do it, and we can get consensus and move forward. Anything else, Greg? Any questions?
Greg, by night, if the state had a completion date on, we'd watch out, really.
I serve a wheel.
Now someone said wrong there, would that be completing their march?
That Owen Hill, it's May, I think. I heard May. That'd be good, they're great, they're giving all of. Anything else? Thank you, and I would like to adjourn. Last by Mr. Cogdell, second by Mr. Trivet, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.